City Council for Monday, June 7th, 2021. I'd ask you to please rise for a brief invocation of the
Recording in progress.
Pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we are here as a community beginning to feel a sense of relief with the COVID situation, hopefully heading in the right direction, and that's downward. And we are thankful for the blessings and the support that we, as a community, have received during this trying time. We're ever thankful that many of our residents who got struck with it were able to overcome their sickness and were back in good health. And our numbers, the total of those we lost and those that were infected by it, were some of the lowest in the Chicagoland region. So we're ever thankful to be a member of that standing in that particular situation. As always tonight, we want to ask for a blessing on all those in our community, regardless of their race, religion, color, belief, or the way that they choose to go about business. We are ever thankful that we have a community that understands each other and works very hard to appreciate the good things that are done, as was very evident by the outstanding turnout we had on Memorial Day for the veterans' memorial service at the VFW. Tonight, we just ask for a direction and understanding and vision for the city council as we go about making the vital decisions before our community. And we just ask, finally, for a special blessing tonight to be showered upon all those men and women from our community who are serving in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Chanset, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rizotti?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
So we have, what, three absent or two absent?
One absent.
One absent? I thought I heard two. So we have thirteen members of the city council present account for us, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item four, the reminder from the chair to please use the microphone if you are going to speak tonight, because this is being recorded and broadcast over BATV, so we want everybody to be able to hear it. And moving then to item number five, are items to be removed, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. And Alderman Chanset, as chairman of governmental services, do you have anything this evening?
Your honor, aware of none.
All right, then, we will move to item number six, which is presentation of consent agenda. Again, Alderman Chanset, as chairman of governmental services, would you present this, please?
Your honor, thank you. The consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for April 13th, April 20th, 2021 special meeting, the historic preservation commission minutes for April 12th and May 10th, 2021, the April 2021 city council financial reports. For approvals, the May 28th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $915,003.04, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,276,424.45. City council minutes for May 3rd, 2021, Part 1, May 3rd, 2021, Part 2, and May 17th, 2021. Resolution 21-52-R approving a plan of dedication for parts of West Wilson Street. Resolution 21-55-R authorizing execution of Task Order Number 3 with H.R. Green for the Mahoney Creek watershed-based plan. Resolution 21-53-R authorizing execution of a contract with Alliance Construction for Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project. Resolution 21-58-R approving Phase 3 construction engineering consultant supplement agreement with BLA for Main Street construction for an amount not to exceed $73,296. Resolution 21-59-R authorizing city administrator to apply for Kane County development funds and execution of all necessary documents. Resolution 21-56-R authorizing a master services agreement with TKB Associates. Ordinance 21-28, amending Title VII, Chapter 3, Section 5 of the Batavia Municipal Code related to cemetery charges. Resolution 21-51-R approval of modifications to cemetery charges. Resolution 21-57-R approving the 2021 to 2025 electric tree trimming contract. And resolution 21-62-R approving a contract with Quad Plus for the Paramount Substation maintenance and testing for an amount not to exceed $48,043, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Knapp for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizotti?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening who wishes to address the city council? Okay. All right, we will then move to item number eight, which is the proclamation for Pride Month, and I'm honored to introduce Alderman Chanset, who's going to read this.
Your honor, our proclamation, whereas the city of Batavia strives to celebrate diversity with its residents and all who set foot in the city, and whereas the United States was founded upon the Declaration that all people are created equal, that life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness are among the inalienable rights of every person, and that each shall be afforded the equal protection of the law, and whereas the month of June is designated as Pride Month across the land to commemorate the Stonewall riots, which occurred in June 1969, generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQ+ rights movement, and whereas, while much progress has been made, the ongoing struggle of transgender, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and other sexual minorities for basic civil rights continues to provide inspiration to us all, and the lives and livelihoods of LGBTQ+ are still often threatened, and whereas all citizens, and especially our youth, should feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, community leaders, and the community at large, without regard to sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and whereas Batavia celebrates the history and diversity of our city's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community, and promotes an atmosphere in which all residents can live free from discrimination, and whereas LGBTQ+ Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate the harmony in which we all coexist. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Pride Month, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the diversity in our town that makes us proud to call Batavia home. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizotti?
Aye.
Rizotto?
I'm sorry.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Do you have a...
Yeah. Actually, I understand that we have a community organization that's here tonight, but I do want to underscore, tonight's kind of an important night. I did check, your honor, we've never had one of these proclamations before, have we?
We had it last year.
One just like this one?
Mm-mm. We had it last year. I remember writing it last year, because you had asked me, and we couldn't come...
So we did one for Youth Outlook. I don't remember doing a Pride one.
Right, it was Youth Outlook.
Right. So yeah, we did one celebrating the 20th anniversary of a youth organization. But I think that kind of changed things a little bit.
I do.
And so now, it seems appropriate to do one.
We'll do another one in another meeting.
I hope we keep doing them. But I want to say, yes, there is an organization that's here tonight, but tonight's kind of a deeply emotional night for me. When I sought the appointment to city council back in 2010, there were two things that gave me pause, to the point that I actually almost didn't run for public office. One, I got busted for marijuana when I was in college, and I was really deeply embarrassed by that. But the second was because I had a husband, and I had deep shame about both of those things, because I know that not every one of my neighbors would have been cool with either one of those things. I did talk to Bill McGrath at the time, who I think had pretty good Gadar, and probably knew about the husband thing, and didn't mention it, and he said, "Times are changing with drug laws, so you just hang on." And I purposely left my sexuality out of city discussions, one, because it's none of your business, two, it's divisive. And all politics, I guess, are inherently local, so I guess I've just done myself the best to stay as neutral as I could. I just didn't want to be accused of pushing any kind of gay agenda. We went down to Springfield, and I will say that that trip definitely changed things for me, with Alderman Stark and Alderman Atack. One, because Alderman Atack is hilarious when she's drunk, and Alderman Stark turned to me at one of the breaks while we were driving down there, I was having a cigarette outside, and she looked at me, and she goes, "Alderman Chanset, you look really good, that suit, it looks like your wedding suit." And I'm like, I literally had just gotten married to a guy that week before, and I said, it is, it's funny to say it, it is my wedding suit, because I didn't actually own one. And she said, "What's her name? Tell me about her." And I'm like, "Well, his name is John." She shrugged it off like it was nothing, and I think that's probably why she and I are so such good friends today. My voice changed when I heard about the rash of suicides that we had in our community and in nearby communities, from youth that struggled with the same shame that I had struggled with, but obviously had overcome. We invited Youth Outlook to come speak here, to say that there, you know, that it does get better, that there are organizations out there to help people. And I guess that's the meeting, probably where I found my voice, because I was actually truly being my authentic self. And so if you watch city council meetings from before then, and watch city council meetings after then, there's definitely a change in my voice, because I'm actually being who I'm supposed to be. So if there's a gay kid watching tonight, it does get better, and it's nothing to be ashamed of, and weed is legal now, so that's actually not something to be ashamed of either, just wait till you're 21. And it gives me great pride to welcome another group to talk about how it does get better. Thank you.
And so to speak on this momentous occasion, I would like to invite Michael Stroud to come up, and Michael is with an organization called Out in Fox Valley, and he's doing some things to coordinate events throughout the tri-cities to highlight LGBTQ+ and their allies in our communities. And so I'll turn over the microphone to Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, and city council. It's an honor to be here. I first want to say thank you so much for sharing your story. I obviously had no idea, because it's none of our business, but that was very brave of you, and it's good to know that there is somebody from our community in leadership. It's so important to us. But back to Out in Fox Valley, we are a new pride nonprofit organization here. We have two goals in mind. Out in Fox Valley exists as a dot com and as a Facebook group. We're here to link all LGBT groups, affirming churches, LGBT-owned businesses, et cetera, all around Fox Valley. Our second goal is tri-city's pride. We're here to bring pride celebrations and programs here to St. Charles, Batavia, and Geneva. And so far, we've been really proud and excited about the public support. We can't say thank you enough. We have a handful of events coming up this week, one of them being this Friday at a local store called Paula's Cuchia Consignment. We're going to be doing a drag queen storytime for LGBT youth. We're going to be following that Saturday. We're going to be having some community outreach. We're going to be having some tables set up behind Bulldog Cellar on the Riverwalk area. And that's going to be an area for LGBT businesses to sell some of their art, for churches to invite people to their organization. Later that day, we're going to have a barbecue with a big dance party, and we're going to follow that evening with a drag show and late-night dance party at Bulldog Cellar. Sunday, we're actually going to end Pride Weekend in Batavia at Andre's Restaurant, which is this super cute riverfront, second-story Mexican slash American restaurant. They've been super supportive of our community, and we're happy to bring a show there. We have events planned all the way till next year, but our biggest goal really is to create an alliance between the three cities here, between the leaders and all of you guys within the three cities, just to create parades and marches and, you know, when I first started this, it was just a guerrilla queer bar group, which, if you guys have heard of that, is basically where a group of gays get together and go to one bar, and they turn it gay for the night. With a bunch of parents and LGBT youth reaching out and sharing their stories and their concerns, this grew into something much bigger, and that's become our big focus now. And we're so happy and thankful to have you guys behind us and your support, so thank you so much. And we look forward to meeting with you guys in the future to discuss how we can create programs together for youth and young adults in this area. But one thing's for certain, is we are literally in all levels of society here. And when I first moved here, everybody told me that they didn't think that the towns were ready for something like this. And it's been proven that quite the opposite, and, you know, we're thankful for that. So I look forward to meeting with you all and speaking with you in the future, and you can always check out outinfoxvalley.com. There is a Facebook group, also Out in Fox Valley. It'll have all links to events and affirming churches and groups there, and you can always reach me at michael@outinfoxvalley.com. Thank you so much, and happy Pride Month.
So wait a minute, can we present that proclamation to them, Dan?
Oh, I wanted to take it home, but okay.
This is one of my directors, Michael Winder.
receives the bicycle-friendly city designation at the bronze level by the League of American Bicyclists.
Yes, I've invited members of the Bicycle Commission here tonight, if you would like to come join me up here at the podium. And also, Chief Dyke, would you join me up here at the podium as well? We are so proud that our Bicycle Commission takes the initiative. How, when, is it every year, or is it every three?
Four years.
Every four years, the designations are given, ranking cities on how bicycle-friendly they are, the types of education programs and enforcement, what they do to make sure that bicyclists are safe in our community. And we are so proud that for the third time, so that represents 12 years of this, that our Bicycle Commission has gathered the information necessary for us to complete our application, and we are one of only 27 cities in the state of Illinois given the bronze designation as bicycle-friendly city. And so kudos to all of you for doing all of that work and getting us our bronze recognition. Again, I want to give them all a hand. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm just going to say thank you again for support. As you know, I, well, actually, we have new Aldermen. I haven't met a lot of you. But we appreciated, the Commission appreciates the support of the council and of the community. We couldn't do it without you. But really, what I thought I would do is, Amy has really been the one that has pulled this work together, so I thought she deserved the recognition.
And the League of American Bicyclists presents the city of Batavia with this certificate, and so I'd love to get a group picture with all of you. And Mayor, would you also join us commemorating the city of Batavia, Illinois, getting the 2021 to 2025 bronze designation?
Committee for the now-return of the Fourth of July fireworks program to be hosted at Engstrom Park on West Main Street, directly across the street from the Batavia High School football field, with the actual firing to start at 9:30 PM on July the 4th. Contracts have been signed, and we still would like to have a few more donations, because we still need a little money to pay for this year's show, but we're confident that will roll in. So I guess I would ask for Alderman to make a motion approving the Fourth of July application for the fireworks.
Motion to approve the fireworks application.
Second. Moved by Alderman Knapp, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the fireworks application for July 4th. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Knapp?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, none absent. All right, moving to item 11, which is a report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're very honored to have the president and CEO, Margaret Burrow, here, and you want to give us your speech.
My speech, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having me this evening. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all in person. I want to start out by thanking you, Mayor, for honoring our award recipients at our annual Inspire Celebration. It was an awesome event last month, well-attended, a great way to celebrate our Citizen of the Year, our Batavia Impact Award winners, the Spirit of Batavia Award winner, and our OLE Award winners, one of them that will be joining me this evening in a couple of minutes. So thank you. It is really a terrific community event. I thank all of you that have come, please put it on your schedule for next year, because it is a great way to celebrate what Batavia is doing. We will be moving it back to January next year, so really, it's only six months away. So save the date. I want to say, it is truly a happy Monday, as Illinois is back on track to move to Phase 5 of the Restore Illinois Plan this Friday, June 11th. Reopening under Phase 5 guidelines will still carry some restrictions. While capacity limits are lifted, some mask and social distancing requirements will remain. The Chamber is constantly communicating with our local businesses to keep them informed of the latest pertinent information relative to the pandemic, and we are thrilled that businesses are finally returning to full productivity. We're hearing from the businesses in town, in all industries, that they have job openings and are having a difficult time finding employees. The Chamber is trying to help by using our active job board on our website and posting those jobs to social media. We have been boosting the posts to provide more visibility to these open positions. If you know someone looking for a job, please direct them to our website, bataviachamber.org. If you are hiring, use the Chamber's board, use the Chamber's job board to help find candidates. The Chamber is also voicing concern to our state and federal leaders about the current labor shortage. I will be coordinating a walking tour on Thursday with state rep Maura Herschauer to walk through our downtown businesses and talk to them about many of the issues they are currently facing, and discuss what assistance they need. I would like to give a shout-out to our new members of the Batavia Chamber, American Technologies, RNS Liquors and Wine, and First Student. See our website for more information, and please patronize these businesses and organizations that contribute to our town. Our local businesses are the backbone of our community. I also want to give a reminder about Chamber Bucks, our $10 gift certificates available at the Chamber's office, 106 West Wilson. They can be used at over 70 Batavia businesses, including the 10 new Boardwalk shops. Chamber Bucks are the greatest, most versatile gift they fit everyone. The Chamber is offering many educational and networking opportunities to continue to support our businesses. Many of our events, returning to in-person, we have these, and I encourage you to join us. Wednesday, June 9th, at 8:00 AM, is our in-person Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. It's our morning networking held at Comfort Inn and Suites. Wednesday, June 16th, is at 9:00 AM, is an online webinar regarding rebuild and re-energize crucial business components to success. Wednesday, June 16th, at 4:30, is our networking it, our evening networking, being hosted at Bar Evolution, spotlighting mutual ground as our featured not-for-profit for the month. Please join us, there's no registration required for that. Friday, June 25th, at 11:00 AM, we will be hosting the Batavia Chamber's 47th Annual Golf Classic. Registration is now open. Everyone is invited to join us. As always, I request that you follow the Chamber on Facebook and check the Chamber's website, bataviachamber.org, to register for our events, sign up as a business community member, and find other pertinent information. Before I introduce my guest, does anybody have any questions or comments for me? Good, I covered it all. Great, well, then I want to introduce my guest tonight. His name is David Gray. He's the owner of Green Seed Contract Packaging in Batavia. Green Seed Packaging was just awarded the Green OLE Award from the Batavia Environmental Commission. Flexible packings, they offer flexible packing solutions to reduce waste and improve energy conservation operations for food manufacturers while meeting consumers' demand for convenience. Please welcome David Gray to tell us more about Green Seed's business located here in Batavia, and a valued member of the Batavia Chamber. Thanks, David.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. Well, Mayor and the Aldermen and city council, thanks for having me here. Before I get into talking to you about Green Seed, I want to just commend Alderman Chanset for his story. And Alderman, you know, my story isn't as deep and probably is adverse, but growing up in the south side of Chicago in a neighborhood where I always like to say I was the Oreo filling of the cookie, I understood adversity, and I understand about community. And as a result, being a CEO, one of the first things that I did for organization is that everybody matters, and that's become a mantra and an essence of our organization. So I commend you, and if you ever get a chance to come out to our company, you know, I'd love to sit down and visit with you. Margaret, let me just go with a correction. I'm the CEO, I'm not the owner, and Green Seed is interesting, because Green Seed's part of a family office that has had a lot of success in what we coin today in the CPG world, which is consumer packaged goods. goods, is external manufacturing. Our family office has been in this space for over five decades now successfully. Their two first business, they exited with great success. The first one, I think many of you may have, may know just because they were part of the fabric of the Fox Valley Power Packaging. And then second, they went on from that to take more of a strategic role with a middle-market private equity group out of Chicago called Windpoint Partners, and they went and bought Hartside, which is the largest food manufacturing company in North America. Green Seed is, is an evergreen investment for the family that has, that is, and will be around for decades to support families for generation. I came to Green Seed about 11 years ago, and I transitioned down to private equity, where I was on the operational side for a PE group out of San Francisco. And I really had a unique opportunity to redesign and rethink what manufacturing could be. And back in 2009, it was apparent that manufacturing had a lot of challenges, but also a lot of opportunities. And then what we wanted to do at Green Seed was, we really wanted to build a business model that was really strategic. And at the core, it was focused on this segment of the food industry that was growing rapidly, premium foods, organic, non-GMO, gluten-free. And we wanted to be that backbone that operations for, you know, many of the leading CPGs globally, companies like Nestle and General Mills and Pepsi. And so we, we sought out and really focused our efforts on bringing in technology at the time that we felt were going to really start to change the way that food was packaged, much of the way that food had been packaging in the, in the decades before that had been in rigid packaging, you know, corrugated boxes, rigid plastic. And China and Asia really was starting to see the movement of using flexible packaging as an alternative, but really, it was a vehicle that allowed consumer packaged goods to get into growing cities much easier. When you think about the weight and the process of moving, putting flexible goods on bikes, motorcycles, rickshaws, trains, cars, a lot easier to pack out, a lot easier to weigh than rigid. And so we started to really take our business and invest in that technology to support brands that were moving their food into these types of packaging formats and create new processes to blend and pack dry goods. So I'm really, really excited, because we've had over a decade of tremendous success. We've been in the backyard of Batavia, like Margaret has said, in what has been national news, and actually global, is we are, we're really faced with some really difficult times coming out of COVID. You know, we are, we're seeing the challenges with finding skilled labor. We are, we're really seeing that the challenges of innovation and the cost to innovate with the tax, both at the federal and state level. And you know, right now, as you see from our President down, is that, you know, manufacturing is going to be the backbone to really driving this country back to a place where we're create Ford mobility from the ground up. And I'm excited to be that, part of that. I've been, the opportunity to be with some great leaders, to really start to think about that and ideate and figure out ways that we can solve that. But yeah, today, I, I'm sure you guys have got a lot of questions for me, and I'd like to just pause and allow you guys to answer any questions, and I might be able to help you guys have some more insights, whether it's with Green Seed or from an industry standpoint.
Do we have any questions from the council? You know, I think one of the things that maybe you could, do you have an actual site that you address Batavia at?
We do, we do. We've got two plants, both in an industrial park, 1025 Paramount Parkway, and then 905 Hubbard.
Because I always like to have, whenever somebody's making a presentation, identify where in the, in the community you are, because sometimes the aldermen like to go out and drive around and see what you look like and where you're at. Do you have any, like, a website or anything that people can dial up on that they could?
Of course, of course, yeah. It's Green Seed CP, and that's Green Seed, S-E-E-D-C-P, as in contractpackaging.com.
Okay. Well, I'm sure with the, many people who are watching this on TV right now, there's probably several dialing you up right now, so seeing what you have to offer.
Well, I, I hope that's true. I, you know, part of me is saying, I think it's, it's, it's a bit more challenging than that. You know, we've got some dynamics going on. There's three factors. You know, one, we've got people that are making too much money and staying home. Two, we've got moms that can't come back because childcare is too expensive, and so they got to wait till school start back up. And three, we've got people that are really struggling with just still the fear of COVID and the lack of vaccinations, or their theory of like vaccinations.
Well, I thank you for coming down tonight, or coming on board here and giving us your update, and we'll look forward to another report about you in the next year or some other time, as things continue to grow and prosper. And certainly feel free to, if you have any needs or questions or complaints or anything, the City Council and myself are here the first and third Mondays of every month, and we're all enlisted in the city directory, so you can find us all, email or phone or whatever, if anybody wants to make any comments. So feel free to contact us if you find that you need a push. And thank you for your membership in the Batavia Chamber and supporting Margaret and all the good work that her organization does, because that's what really kind of makes this town click, and I appreciate your good effort. So thanks for coming on, and we'll look forward to talking to you again real soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say a few words. The city of Batavia, I find it very easy to nominate Green Seed Contract Packaging for the Green Oli Award this year. It is our environmental commission, who are the ones who collect all of the different applications for various businesses. But through a connection that Andrew Greenhagen, the chairman of our environmental commission, made with Green Seed Packaging, they reached out to the city of Batavia, and we had a few meetings to talk about their business and the, the attention and efforts that they put into reducing the carbon footprint of their business and looking for ways to produce their products in the most ecological ways possible. But beyond that, they wanted to meet with us to see if there were things that they could partner with the city itself in partnering on environmental projects. And I really appreciated that so much, and we'll continue to look for ways that we can do that in the future. David, thank you so much for your time and wanting to do that with us. We really appreciated it.
Yeah, you're welcome. You know, and I think I do want to just elaborate a little bit. The backbone of that story is that Danin from Perris, who's one of our big clients, sought out to reach out to you on behalf of us in a collaborative way to figure out how we could work as a, you know, non-GMO and, and, you know, business to try to solve some of these environmental needs that are going on. And that's something I think that we certainly would like to continue to have these conversations, because we both know that it's, it's social, it's environmental, it's governance, that's really going to change the game of business.
Thank you.
So thank you for all you're doing, and we'll continue to do, and as I say, we'll look forward to chatting with you again real soon. So again, thanks.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, we'll move to item number 12 on the agenda, which is ordinance 2129, Vacation of Railroad Street Right-Away. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. This is Vacation of Railroad Street Right-Away, which is a piece of property known near Laurelwood Park off of North River Street and Gore Street. Basically, this is just a cleanup of one of the things that we find on a constant basis, little things that happened years and years and years ago that get missed, and the city is going to vacate the right-of-way on this. And then the next two ordinances will determine how that gets transferred over to the Park District. Does anybody have any questions?
You know, I just want to point out, this, we're really dealing with a piece of Batavia history with this one. Because this was the railroad right-of-way there on North River Street that, number one, ran down to the Challenge Windmill Factory. And they used to load many of the windmill kits that they made, they couldn't put them on wagons, or you had to put them on railroad cars. That was the only way you could ship them out to the American West where the big market was. So there was probably literally thousands of windmills ran down this street, which is now a street there many years ago. And so I just think that's an interesting kind of changing history of what we're doing here, but this is a kind of a historic spot in Batavia, because that's where all the windmills from the Challenge traveled out on that route there, so. And later, where Cal Joyce was, was a creamery for milk. And so they used to ship a lot of milk out of there on the railroad cars. So we had quite a railroad business going down there on North River Street for a while, and this was where part of the tracks at, so.
Yeah, it is amazing to me, all the different railroads that went through this town.
When you look at, they just worked up on Batavia Avenue and pulled out the tracks up
there when they were doing the last bit of work at the intersection up there. They found a couple rails up there.
We were very fortunate, we had Mr. Judge Lockwood moved to Batavia in 1853, and he had been a member of the Illinois Supreme Court, and he was, had the distinction of giving Abraham Lincoln his verbal law exam. And he was on the Supreme Court and got appointed to be the conservator for purchase of all the railroad right-aways in the northern part of the state of Illinois in that year, and create the railroad network. So in the town that, he built his house where the Goslins now live there on South Batavia Avenue, was Lockwood Hall. And he lived there, and so the story goes is that one of the things he wanted was the ability to commute to work. So he worked very actively to get the track on the west side of the river put into place between North Aurora and Geneva, so he could get a Burlington Line or Union Pacific Line or whichever one he needed to go on his trips to find railroad right-of-ways. So he was the original commuter out of Batavia. And he'd walk through the cemetery and get down, and they'd stop the train and put them on him, take him up to northwestern line in Geneva, and he'd go off, or down to Aurora on the Burlington, and he'd go off. And so we really had quite a role there. That's the reason we got all those railroad tracks. I think we had the guy putting them in the state, living here in town, so we were, we were very fortunate. Okay, we have this ordinance.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2129, Vacation of Railroad Street Right-Away.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alman Knopf, for the approval of ordinance 2129, Vacation of Railroad Street Right-Away. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Zirone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's one absent. Okay, moving to item 13, ordinance 21-30, requesting transfer of a certain parcel from the Batavia Park District, Prairie Commons.
Okay, this is actually the, out at the water tower site, but this is also with the Park District. This would be transferring the piece of property. They will get an access point on one side of the property to get access through to the bike path or prairie path that's out there, and then the city will get a piece of property from the Park District for access into the water tower site. So that's what the next two are here. So, do we have any questions? Something we wanted to wait till they were at a certain point with the development out there before we transferred these properties. We knew exactly how it was going to lay out.
That's moving rapidly, so.
Yep, it is.
Lots going on there.
Okay, I'll make the motion then that we approve ordinance 21-30, requesting transfer of a certain parcel from the Batavia Park District at Prairie Commons site.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alman Soffa, for the approval of ordinance 21-30 for the transfer of certain parcels from the Batavia Park District. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Zirone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 21-30 is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's one absent. Moving to 14, which is Resolution 21-060-R, authorizing transfer of property to the Batavia Park District, Prairie Commons, and intergovernmental agreement. Alderman Wolf.
Okay, this is the third and final step in this, and this is the authorizing of transfer of the property and an intergovernmental agreement to accomplish both. So we'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 21-60-R, authorizing transfer of property to the Batavia Park District, Prairie Commons, and the intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alman Soffa, for the approval of ordinance 21-
Sixty.
Sixty-R, for the transfer of property to Batavia Park District, Prairie Commons, with intergovernmental agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Zirone.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Resolution 21-60-R is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's one absent. Moving to 15, which is Resolution 21-054-R, authorizing Phase One Engineering Agreement with CMT for Main Street Reconstruction, Van Nortryk Avenue to Randall Road. Who's got this one?
Yes, I'll take this, Honor.
Alderman Rizzato.
Yeah, this is the first phase for our Main Street Reconstruction Project between Nortryk Avenue and Randall Road. This is for the engineering services, which has been awarded to Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. It is, this project, Phase One is 100% funded by the city of Batavia, and then the actual construction, we have a 75% grant from IDOT. Any discussions?
I don't know where this is going, but this past Wednesday or Thursday, I was requested by Congresswoman, or Congresswoman to come out to the Elm's Restaurant, where they brought a photographer, and we made some pictures, because she's going to put this project on her list of federally-funded engineering projects to be approved in this current transportation infrastructure bill that Congress is promoting, and it's being debated now, and I think they're trying to build up some community support for it. So if that gets passed, we get the engineering paid for, I think, out of this.
That would be better yet.
Yeah, it would be. So she tells me, she called me today and said it's been put on the list. It's in, if you go on, get on federal documents, apparently you can find this Batavia project on there for the engineering to be paid for out of this bill that the President and everybody else, and we're having this big debate about how big it should be or shouldn't be and whatever. So the Congressman is doing her part to get us some money.
It'll look fantastic when it's.
So any further discussion? Kirk call the roll. You're going to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2154-R, authorizing execution of Phase One Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement for the Main Street Reconstruction Project with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $341,004.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Rizzato, second by Alman Behrens, for the approval of Resolution 21-54-R for the Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly contract for the Main Street Reconstruction. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Moving to 16, which is Resolution 21-061-R, authorizing task order number one with K, TKB Associates for the purchase and implementation of a laser fitch document management system for an amount not to exceed $32,810. Who's got, Alderman Chanzet?
Your Honor, thank you. As we discussed in committee, the city has all kinds of documents stored in all types of buildings throughout town. This is an opportunity to get those documents indexed, make it so we can search them, do full text searching. Staff is recommending that we go with this particular company, TKB Associates, and the 2156 we did in consent, and 2161R is, is the motion we'll be making then. The cost of this is $32,810, and then ongoing costs of $15,000 and some change, and I would move that we approve 21-61-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanzet, second by Alman Barron for the approval of Resolution 21-61-R. Any discussion, Your Honor? Alderman Wolf?
I think that the one thing I wanted to, and the reason why we left it on the regular agenda was to talk about it, because it will make it easier for the general public to be able to go onto our website to search these out and be able to find them. So hopefully, maybe that could reduce some FOIA's and some other workload on the staff, and also make it much more open for people to be able to find stuff, so that they don't think we're trying to hide anything. We're trying to make it as open and easy to access as we possibly can.
And the other thing with the existing documents that we have, it allows us to free up more usable space here in City Hall when we can eliminate file cabinets by putting things online.
It happened no less than today, we were in need of having, trying to find some documents that may have been created over 30 years ago. And we used to have some folks here that could run up in the third floor and find things.
We still do. We, we have them insured.
So it, it's, it's, it can be a real chore, so I, this is great. We've, we've also, as you know, been in the process with the Batavia Library. They're in, they've scanned all the old Batavia Herald newspapers, and now they're indexing them so that there can be a complete file of all the, what's in those newspapers and, because we get a lot of folks in here that want to find out when grandpa died in 1906 and where he's buried, or, you know, there's all kinds of requests for information that this will open up, and we just tell them, we'll go on the computer and dial it up, and you'll be able to find it. So, great idea, I'm all for this. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and second then for the approval of the Resolution 21061-R. Kirk called the roll.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Chanzet and Barron.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13, 13 yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, moving to 17, the administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do is acknowledge the Batavia Rotary Club for the donation of two bike racks, which today were installed at the Boardwalk Shops. I think they'll be a nice addition, they're bright blue and look really attractive there at the shops, and we know that a lot of people arrive there on their bicycles, so I know they'll be put to good use, and we thank the generosity of the members of the Batavia Rotary Club. Our next joint meeting with the Park Board on the master plan for the Fox River is scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. The project website has been updated and now includes the results from the survey that were done. It has the future dates of, of meetings, and also we will have a first public open house to discuss alternatives for the dam removal. That will be on June 24th at 6:00 PM. I'm not exactly sure of the venue at this point, so there's a conflict for this room, so we think that it'll be at one of the Park District facilities. Next is our new economic development manager is Shannon Malik Jarmus, and she started today, and she will be at our committee of the whole meeting tomorrow, so it will be my pleasure to introduce her to you then. We've issued a partial permit for the Boca Dido's relocation to the Newton House at 11 North Batavia Avenue. We are currently in the process of reviewing the submittal for the remaining development of the Old Avenue Chevrolet site on McKee Street south of Raising Canes. We've received plans for a new dental office building to be constructed in the 1,000 block of West Wilson Street, and those plans are being sent out for various staff reviews. Everybody, there's, there's a lot going on in public works right now. Crews are working in Ward 1 installing new water main and storm sewers. Nycor is onsite performing their necessary relocations, and it's anticipated the Ward 1 drainage project will be substantially completed by midsummer, with final landscape restoration completed by early fall. Contractors have mobilized and work has begun on the water treatment plant improvements, and the project is anticipated to extend into 2022. Staff is continuing to work with our contractors in Area 3 to finalize sewer landscape restoration issues from that 2020 program. Unfortunately, I guess fortunately, weather has been dry, but it's, it's not fortunately if you are trying to gather quality groundwater flow data like we are in Carriage Crest. We've got the monitoring equipment in place, and we're ready to capture data once weather conditions allow. Perhaps tonight might have offered some opportunities in that regard. And work on the Paramount Substation reconstruction project is progressing on schedule, which is great news. The Paramount Substation is the one that serves primarily our industrial area, so they're all important, but there are a lot of businesses that rely on that. It should be substantially completed by mid-July, and that's all that I have unless anybody has questions for me.
Any questions? Okay.
Very much.
Let's go to committee reports, Government Services. Alderman Chanzet, do you have any committee report?
No report.
City Services?
Yes, we will have our Resolution 2164-R, which is a discussion on the conversion of River Street to a one-way tomorrow night.
Okay. Community Development?
No, no report tonight.
And Public Utilities?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Okay. Do we have other business tonight from the council? All right, I'm going to keep the mayor's report somewhat short. I just want to share a situation that we had, happened last week. The city of Atasca, Illinois, is taking great interest in Batavia. And so they called originally, and they said they wanted to come out, and they wanted to meet with Laura and I, and they wanted to go over and tour the Boardwalk Shop. So I was ready to go, and I get a call saying, well, they called and said they aren't coming. I don't know, I guess they thought it was raining or something. So we sat down on that, and then we find out later they came anyway, and met with Jamie Som and maybe Mr. Hant?
I think it was Beth Walker as well.
Beth Walker. And they got to see it. So then they called back and said they wanted to come, was it last Monday?
Uh, last Thursday.
Last Thursday, and, and have lunch with Laura and I. Well, they paid for the lunch, so it didn't cost the city of Batavia anything. But we, the relatively new mayor and the city, I guess the newer city administrator there is former Mayor Weisner and Aurora's aide. So she heard or saw some stuff in Batavia, so they came over, and so the mayor was very interested in some of the things we are doing in Batavia. And one of the things he asked me when I went in to sit down, he says, you'd like to know how we run a city council meeting? He hears we do it better than a lot of other people. So he says, what's the secret? And so I told him, I said, well, you know, when, many years ago, when I was first elected mayor, I had sat out in the audience as a reporter and watched this, and thought that there was probably a better way to, to kind of start the meeting, where you would specifically have a report about all the nice things that are happening in town, invite in the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street and whatever, and if there's other things that are happening that are significant or, you know, mean something to people, you should allow for those to take place. Well, I think tonight was a good illustration of that. I wish the mayor could have been watching tonight. Anyway, he was very interested in that, and so then, you know, I said, you know, the other thing we do is, is that, you know, if there's somebody in town that's done some honorable thing or made a heroism act or something, we'll bring them down. And he says, oh, this is all good stuff. I said, yeah, and you know, once you think about it as you're sitting there as a city official, you start to feel some pride in, in your interest in the town, and it, and it showcases, you know, the good things that are really happening. And so I said, we really saved the business, the votes, to probably the end of the meeting, because we, we spend that probably 20 minutes to a half hour at the beginning, just kind of telling, telling the world about ourselves. And I think they left here, I would be very surprised if you don't hear Atasca's copying our agenda and is going the way we are. So now I've been told by Metro West that they've gotten some calls from, with some other cities who want to come to Batavia, so I don't know where this is going to stop. Next thing I know, we're going to have them sitting out here in the audience, watching, watching you guys, guys and gals, act, do your business, but we seem to have got something going here about how we run a meeting, so I'm finding that quite interesting. Feel good about it, quite honestly. It speaks well for people wanting to see what we're all about. So I, you know, the biggest news I think I had to share is, one I already told you, was the fireworks is going to be the Fourth of July. We're putting it together, the committee's meeting, and they've got, right now, they're trying to line up somebody to kind of organize the food vendors. There seems to be quite a few that want to come over and park themselves on Millview Drive there and whatever, and the only thing that we're not sure of right now is, on the day after, we may need some folks to help us pick up the grounds around there if there's paper cups or anything scattered around, but that's generally going to be taken care of in short order, so that's kind of the big plan for that. But there is a lot of people who are telling me they are extremely happy that we're having the Fourth of July, and how last year, when that had to happen, that we had to cancel, that was just like a real damper on the whole summer season, and it wasn't the same, and how much they look forward to it. Chief Yule and his guys tell, guys and gals tell me that when we pull that thing off out there, that, that annually is the largest traffic jam of the year that the Batavia Police Department has to deal with. They have never, nothing else, the whole rest of the year comes anywhere near the mob scene that they get out of that thing. So they've refined it now so that they shut down the street now. When it's over with, we shut Main Street down for, I don't know, was the chief, a half hour after, and we just let everybody walk in the street, and then, so we tell people, don't park, so you have to go on Main Street when you leave, park facing a different direction. That seems to be working, and it gets, it gets there, but there is thousands of people out there, especially if you ride down Randall Road during the program, and you look at all the parking lots at Target and Walmart and Kohl's and Jewel and, and, you know, everybody tells me the biggest problem there is, is there aren't that many bathrooms to run into stores and use the bathroom on. So that's, that's the big issue of that, or we have to deal with. So anyway, it's a good time, and Batavia really seems to appreciate it, and we've been doing it, this will be the, whether it's the 70th or the 71st year, because last year we didn't fire them, we've been shooting that thing off for 70 years, started by the Fire Department in 1950, and they asked people to give them money to pay for the fireworks, and they started something that's never ended, and to this day, we have never paid any tax dollars to buy fireworks. They're all paid for by donation, and we got them money pretty much this year to pay for it, so I think that speaks well for what Batavia likes and wants to keep going. So if any of you aren't busy on the Fourth of July, and you want to come out and help direct traffic, or pick up weeds, or trash in and around, or just stand there with a[1756.77]